Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Work Budget Workshop meeting this July the 8th. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Here.
Vice Mayor Long.
Here.
Commissioner Cassell.
Here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. The Work Budget Workshop, we're going to start with a presentation by the City Manager on this, and then we're going to be opening up to discussions on various points. So, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, and we are here to offer considerations as well as provide an opportunity for Mayor and City Commission to provide guidance relative to milage rate policy. Much of this is productive simply because the preceding months, we provided you all with a great deal of information, data, metrics, data analytics, relative to departmental operations and respective considerations was anticipated in that regard. Our last engagement to this effect was four weeks ago today, June 10th, 2025, in which we had an opportunity to highlight for the City Commission some initial thoughts and suggestions relative to a balanced budget consideration. The focus to that effect entailed a outline of an initial projected shortfall as well as recommendations to alleviate and reduce that shortfall. So, we talked about nearly a $24 million potential gap, and we came up with a number of solutions that alleviated that particular concern. The direction from Mayor and City Commission at the time was, of course, or I should say, City Commission, at the time was to offer a number of milage rate scenarios in time for the July 8th engagement, which we are in position to do so at this particular point in time. With that, Mr. Henry Dakewis, Chief Financial Officer, being accompanied by Deputy Chief Financial Officer Carmen Alaman are here this afternoon to assist in a aggregate presentation that was provided to each of you all before the Independence Day holiday weekend. So, Mr. Dakewis, if you would be so kind, you have the remote for the slide presentation to go to the next slide because I'll highlight that briefly. Ladies and gentlemen, this is nothing more than the snapshot of the general fund considerations we talked about during the June 10th regular meeting. Again, we talk about an initial projected shortfall contemplated at about $24 million, and we demonstrated for you all ways in which we can get that resolved. So, that includes an $8.5 million total assessed valuation, as well as adjustments are taken under consideration, calculated vacancies, attrition, fire, rescue, Department of Police, Parks and Recreation, other departments, some activity in those regards, which is the case in every municipality on a fiscal year basis, non-personnel expenses, doing what we can to identify efficiencies to that effect, as well as an examination of travel and training considerations to get to that place. Our interest is, of course, to support the administrative policy relative to fund balance position, and thus, we share with you all a rounded figure of about 21%. However, that does take under consideration an adjustment from reserves to achieve a balanced budget recommendation. The aftermath of that, of course, again, you all expressed an interest in having both the Office of the City Manager and the Department of Finance to offer scenarios in terms of milage rate options so that the City Commission can offer its direction in time for today. I will also underscore that the principal focus in this regard pertains to the operating budget, the total operating budget. We're not talking yet about the capital improvement program because that's separate and apart from the general fund position and other related activities. That will be addressed during the July 15th workshop meeting. Previously, the commitment for July 15th did include annual presentations from leadership of nonprofit partner organizations. However, the first half hour, 3 o'clock, will devote ourselves relative to the capital improvement program position, and how do we get to a place in which we can offer recommendations in that regard. Getting back to commentary relative to the total operating budget, what is forecast for fiscal year 2025, 2026, i.e. October 1, 2025, is an aggregate total operating budget of $348,607,200. That is what we're referencing, and there's a snapshot included in this afternoon's presentation as we go about the process of getting to that place. At this time, I'll-
Could I ask a question with respect to this slide? It's an actual shortfall of $26.5 million, no? The A-Guide funding is $1,066,000, and we have to consider that. Maybe that amount is going to change. We also have the 3-3 for the fire department, which is $1.4 million, which is not included in this. So, your actual shortfall, is that correct, is $26.5 million?
I'll have more to demonstrate as we continue the presentation. We'll cover those points, ma'am.
So, that is the shortfall, the 26 point?
If I may, just to repeat, the information presented in this initial slide is a snapshot of what we presented to the City Commission June 10th.
Okay.
Since that time, we've taken under consideration the direction regarding 3-3, the considerations regarding A-Guide, and follow-up presentations will take that under consideration, and that will be provided to help the City Commission evaluate options for milage rate. So, Commissioner Cassell, that is forthcoming as part of this afternoon's engagement.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, if I may, at this time, give Mr. Henry Dakewis, Chief Financial Officer, the opportunity to address the next few slides, and then, of course, I'll talk a little bit about milage rate position history before we wrap up. Mr. Dakewis, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Commissioners. So, as Mr. Moore said, we started with the baseline, which is the leftmost column on this sheet. We had an initial projected shortfall of $22 million. The revenues went up since four weeks ago. That's why the shortfall is a little bit less than last time. We looked at revised proposed expenditures, so we have a $22 million shortfall, and we looked at additional projected ad valorem revenues due to the increase in the assessed values. We got the preliminary values from the Assessor's Office of Palm Beach County, and based on the same milage rate, 59063, that we have currently, we would have an increase of revenues of $8.8 million. Looking at the vacancies at a 50% funding, we would save $2.37 million, and then looking at the attrition, the bottom line, fire, police, parks at a 3%, and all other departments a 1% charge for the attrition, that would yield us $1.8 million. Combined with travel and training, 10% for police and fire, 40% cut for other departments, $245,000, and a contribution, a planned drawdown from our reserves by the end of the year of $8.9 million, and the revised shortfall is now dollar-for-dollar offset by these adjustments. We then considered the next three columns at different operating milage rates. So, we have, we're looking at now, that's what I wanted to do, there you go, looking at the second column, 60563 milage rate. So, we start again with the 22945. We now have compensation for the $1.3 million for the fire at 3.333, and $927,000 where we would have to fund the community CRA, and that would be 927, so now the total expenses would be 205, and the shortfall would be 25 million.
Mr. Dakewis, when you mentioned the CRA, you are specifically referring to the A-Guide program, just to be clear for the Commission.
The second line under additional expenditures is, we have fire 3-3 and the A-Guide.
Correct. Thank you.
So, we're looking at replenishing those funds for the CRA only, yes. So, now we're looking at adjustments, and again, we're in that second column. So, because of the increase in milage, we would have an additional $11.6 million. Vacancies would still give us the same 2370. Fire and police and parks, we would look at attrition at 5%, and all other departments at 1.5%. So, the $1.8 million originally contemplated would now be 3 million. But whatever cuts we had to non-personal expenses would be removed. We would save 245.5 on the travel and training, and the drawdown of reserves, a little bit lower than before, 7.9 million. The 25172 on the bottom equals and offsets the 25172 shortfall up above. Any questions now, or should I go through the other two scenarios? Okay? The next scenario, column three, the operating milage is a little bit higher than the previous one, 6.0611. Again, we're staying with the 22965. We are still paying for the 3-3 in the fire department and rescue, and $927,000 in the A-Guide, so the gap is 25192. The additional revenues, $11.7 million. The vacancies are still a save of 2370. The attrition is still 3045. The travel and training, 245, and a little bit lower drawdown on reserves to get 25192, equal and offsetting to the gap up above. If we go to 6.2611 in a milage rate, we have a $26 million gap, but we're making 15.5 million in additional revenues. We would cut back the vacancy cuts. Instead of funding 50%, we would fund 20%. So, that would be a save of 1.185, lower than before. We would look at fire and police on the attrition back down to 3%, and all other departments at 1%, so we get back to the $1,843,507. Again, non-personal expenses would not be touched. Travel and training is the same 245.5, and now the drawdown from reserves is 7.25 million, 26013 offsets. So, what you're seeing is, with the increased milage rate, we have increases in total revenues. It allows us to fund the fire department, emergency rescue 3-3, and the A-Guide of the CRA, which adds up to about $2.2 million, and allows us to reverse some of the original cuts that we had contemplated, but with a balanced budget. Questions?
Not yet. Did you have, yeah?
Mr. Dakewis, please continue, I think, and I'll get into the history as you go along.
Okay, why am I not going to the next slide? Hello, Darcy? There we go. So, while we make all these alternatives, we have to be mindful of our fund balance policy, which is it should be 21%, between 21% and 25% of the operating expenses. So, we started with the audited numbers. CBiz came in and explained to you. So, at the end, September 30, 2024, the fiscal year audited balance was $50,784, which is our baseline here. We made a projection, we are in July, we made a projection for the end of this fiscal year, September 30, 2025, and we are assuming we will draw down $2 million more. So, our baseline, before we go to fiscal year 26 projections, we say our projected fund balance, end of this year, $48.8 million. We then look at the projected drawdown for this coming fiscal year, and we have the four different scenarios, leading to a projected fund balance of 399, 40.9, 40.95, and 41.5. Looking at the projected expenditures, and they do differ for each of the four scenarios, but under all circumstances, 20.7% might be considered 21% on a rounded basis, and the other three scenarios are all at 21%.
At what? You're laughing.
So, what we, while we're looking at revenues and expenses, we're also mindful of the policy for the fund balance. Now, here, we're looking at, what does this mean to an average residential taxpayer? So, this was my first chance to wrestle with some numbers from the Assessor's Office in Palm Beach. So, just value, this is just value, here we go. Just value is market value. If you took all the homes and said, what is its market value? Single-family residential, the total is $14.995 billion. Condominiums, $4.7 billion. All other properties are 8.2. The total for the whole city is just a shade under $28 billion. The assessed value, we don't use full market value, and there are limitations, so that's 21.168 with a corresponding decrease primarily in residential, which makes sense, that's where the legislation is for. Taxable value is a little bit lower than that, so we're looking at $9.4 billion for single-family residences, $3.5 billion for condominiums, all others 6.2, for a total of $19.19 billion. We look at the number of parcels, 33,000 parcels, but 87.3% are in the category of single-family residential and in condominiums. So, what we did is, for each of those three line items, we said, what's the average taxable value? That's the third column that we use, per parcel. So, we just take 9.399 divided by 15,436, you get 609,000 as the average taxable value of a single-family residence. For condominiums, it's 263. All other properties, which includes commercial, 1.5 million. And then, if you look at the increases from last year, we have an increase of 52,784 for the single-family residences, an increase of 9.5%. Increase of 17,795 on a smaller base, 7.2% for the condos, and 2.8 million for everything else. So, what we did is, to calculate the average residential unit, we took only the single-family residential and the condominiums. It covers, as I said, 87.3% of all the properties. So, we take the 609 and the 263, and then we did a weighted average, 46.6% of that number, 40.7% of that number. So, the weighted average taxable value is 447,000, an increase of 36,895, or 9%. So, this is how we use a calculation of what the average residential unit is in the city for this coming fiscal year 2026.
And to reemphasize, Mr. Dakewis, we're referring to the taxable value.
Taxable value, not the market value, not the assessed value.
And that's very important to clarify, so thank you again.
Yes. When we calculate real estate taxes owed, it's on a unit's taxable value. Darcy, next. There we go. So, now we say, what is the impact of the milage rate increases that we've been discussing on the average residential taxpayer? So, we have, here's our current, 5.9063. Here are the three proposals, 60563, 60611, 62611. The change in the milage rate, well, there's no change if we keep the current, and it's .15, .1548, and .3548. What's the taxable value of the average residence from the prior slide? Multiply the change in the milage rate times the average residence, and here's the increase in the city portion of the operating tax bill on an annual level. $67.18, $69.33, $158.91. On a monthly basis, $5.60 for proposal one, $5.78 per month in proposal two, and $13.24 in proposal three. Okay? Next slide?
I'll take the next slide, if I may.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. In speaking to several of you all individually relative to the budget after the various discussions we've had in the preceding months from various departments, et cetera, of course, there's an interest in milage rate history, and thus, we thought we'd include as part of this presentation what the overview has been for the past 10 years in the city of Dairy Beach, Florida. So, beginning, ranging from fiscal year 2017 to the different scenarios for fiscal year 2026, ranging for 10 years. So, of course, the city of Dairy Beach had experienced a number of decreases, whereas fiscal year 2020, 21, 2022, the milage rate remained the same. And there had been increases in property valuation and taxable valuation during those couple of years. Much of that was, of course, the direct impact during the COVID experiences in this community and elsewhere. So, interestingly enough, my first contribution involved the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget process at the very tail end to offer opportunities to achieve a balanced outcome, and that resulted in maintaining the existing milage rate of that year of 6.6611. And of course, since then, there's been reductions, 2023, 2024, you can see what they are. Fiscal year 2023, a reduction of 6.5111 to that figure, and from there, down to 6.3611. Of course, the current milage rate, based on last year's direction on part of the Commission to go to a rollback position resulting in a milage rate of 5.9063, is highlighted and underscored as part of this presentation in relationship to the three ancillary scenarios being offered at 6.0563, 6.0611, and 6.2611. And what's interesting, and Mr. Dakewis, myself, Ms. Alaman, we talked about this, each of those scenarios are actually lower than that of fiscal year 2024 at 6.3611. The initial recommendation offered during last year's process was actually to go from 6.3611 to 6.2611, which is actually the highest of the three scenarios we are making available based on direction having been received by the Commission four weeks ago today, June 10, 2025. So, with that, ladies and gentlemen, it's a nice historical overview, what the dynamics have been over the past 10 years. There's been some downward trajectory with respect to the operating milage rate in the city of Dairy Beach, but again, the scenarios that are being made available for review and consideration are logical, because again, they are, in fact, lower than the previous fiscal year of 2024 at 6.3611, as well as in alignment with the initial contemplation of 6.2611 as we engaged the process for the current fiscal year about one year ago. Mr. Dakewis, if you would, please. Next slide.
Thank you. Here's also a 10-year look at the ad valorem tax revenues. So, we've gone from 8.8 taxable value, 8.8 billion, property tax collected 59.3 million, going up to 63, 68, 71, 76, 80, 90, 100, and last year, a slight increase to 106.7. And the estimate for 2026, assuming an 8.7, with an 8.74% change in the taxable value, would yield the 121,214,172.
That depends on the milage that you're applying for 2026. What's the milage rate you're applying?
That is correct. So, we're looking at, could we go back a second?
I'm just wondering which one of the ones you used, that's all.
Is that the 59063?
The current milage rate is based on the current milage rate.
That's the current milage rate, meaning-
The 5.9063.
We would go up to 121, assuming no change in milage rate but the increase in the assessed value.
Okay.
Here's the projected citywide operating expenses budget for this coming year 25, 26, by fund type. So, we have a budget, the general fund would be $200.4 million. The enterprise funds, those are the ones that look most like a private company where we- we have revenues, we provide services to customers who pay fees and revenues, and they are budgeted to have neither a surplus nor a deficit. That would be seventy nine point seven million dollars. Internal service funds, these are the ones that support everyone. So we have two, we have the fleet for our vehicles and we have an insurance fund that's forty two point seven million. And special revenue funds, these are areas where revenues come in and we want to track them separately and we put them in a separate category, and those are twenty five point seven million for a total of three hundred forty eight million six oh seven. The number in the inside of the circle has a typo and it's not three hundred forty two million, it should be three hundred forty eight million. And the slices of the circle equal the separate numbers in the table. So you should be able to follow that pretty readily. Okay? And now we have the different funds. Terrence, are you leading or am I?
It's simply a brief update relative to enterprise funds, including water and sewer utilities, stormwater utility, sanitation funds, city marina, municipal slash Lakeview golf course. Believe it or not, that is in fact an enterprise fund, thus the discussion will have August twelfth, as I've reported to you all via my weekly report, June twenty seventh, and of course, the cemetery fund. And this is simply to footnote that enterprise funds operate like regular business enterprises. The financial goal for enterprise fund is to charge a user fee that will be sufficient to cover the cost of providing the respective services.
And did we factor in that we're going to close one of the golf courses for a year and there won't be any revenues?
That's actually separate and apart from the operating component, so that is taken into consideration. And we'll talk a little bit more about that during the August twelfth meeting relative to revenue bond transaction considerations as it relates to the golf course. So there's not an adverse impact in relationship to these considerations.
Okay. I would point out that when we say the goal is to cover all the costs, that includes debt service.
Yes, sir.
So what happens is with these, we would have the revenue bonds and the amount of principal and interest payments each year would be rolled up into their costs, which get them to the right fees to charge in order to cover those expenses.
Okay.
So the next slide, if we may, just to continue the enterprise fund overview. And at a glance, much of this, we've had an opportunity to address rate adjustment on water and sewer fund, four point five percent to be effective October one of this year. Projected monthly bill averaging seventy two dollars and twenty cent for six thousand gallons of usage on a monthly basis, as we talked about with Mr. Hodger Mary not terribly long ago when those adjustments were approved. New stormwater rates structure implemented October two thousand twenty three, so there is a need to finance for capital projects and grant matches, and we'll touch upon that next week as a function of the capital improvement program presentation. The sanitation fund, a rate adjustment of two point one four percent effective October this year. Curved side collection for residential single family of about nineteen dollars and fifty four cents a month, this being a function of the exclusive franchise agreement the city enjoys with waste management. And that is an authorization going back nearly a couple of years now, so we are in relationship in that regard. To the point that Commissioner Marker just asked relative to the golf courses, the footnote here is, will be editorial in our comments overdue renovations and repairs, thus the considerations that will be made available five weeks from today, August twelfth, regular city commission meeting. And the highlight focus for the marina cemetery fund, the construction of the mausoleum, of which you've all recently authorized direction and guidance to get to that place. Next slide, please. To continue, at a glance, now we talk a little bit about internal services funds. The garage fund, continuation of fleet replacement program via lease purchase strategy, increase in vehicle rental charges to user departments. So this is all factored in the aggregate proposed budget process as frankly what was initiated last year and a little bit before. The insurance fund, total fund expenses allocated to city user departments increased from four point five percent in total funds from twenty six point eight million dollars to twenty eight million dollars, a slight increase based on the actual calculations and the actuarial analysis to support what those calculations should be. Next slide, please. Other funds, at a glance, special revenue funds, including law enforcement trust funds, special project funds, recreation impact fee fund, neighborhood services fund, beautification trust fund, local option gas tax fund, one to five cents, local option gas tax fund, one to six cents, building permit fund, Karen Foundation opioid settlement fund. So we're actually expanding the category of special revenue funds, and many of you have had an opportunity to participate in policy direction over the past year or so to help the city of Delray Beach get to this place. Then of course, we have in place debt service funds, general obligation bond fund based on what was authorized by the residents back in March of two thousand twenty three, utility debt tax debt service fund, and we're pretty clear in that regard. Next slide, please. This is simply a brief summary of the next steps of the process. Property appraiser certifies taxable values to municipalities that had already taken place, thus the commentary we've offered to this effect. Today's budget workshop, of course, providing an opportunity for tentative millage rate consideration, and that is operating millage. Mr. Dakewis and I will host the town hall meeting engagement Thursday, July twenty fourth, six o'clock PM over at the creative arts school. So we're making arrangements to facilitate that based on direction and guidance being offered today and beyond. Florida Department of Revenue provides estimates for state share revenue sources. As we talk about the proposed budget process today, going back four weeks ago, we did what we could to forecast as best as we possibly could based on trend analysis from previous years relative to revenue sharing outcomes at the state level. So we are cautiously hopeful that those numbers will improve a little bit better, but I caution you because it does not anticipate to be a great deal much. Based on the trend analysis going back the past three to five years, our estimates, preliminary estimates fall in line with what that trajectory might look like. City submits the tentative millage rate to the property appraiser based on direction being initiated today. Public hearings, first and second, Tuesday, September second, and Tuesday, September sixteenth would be the final deadline, and of course, the new fiscal year to begin effective October one, two thousand twenty five. With that, ladies and gentlemen, again, as I mentioned in my introductory comments, a great deal of information has been provided to the city commission in the preceding months. You've heard from departments, we talked about a number of different scenarios. However, just as importantly, an app, an overview of what the revenue picture is anticipated to be despite our efforts or to include efforts to advance revenues to every extent that we possibly can. Likewise, I'd like to give the city commission an opportunity to debate, address any thoughts or concerns you may have, but the direction that you may offer to this effect would be greatly appreciated so that we can proceed with the next steps of the proposed budget process.
Thank you very much. I, I, I know that I'm on record and I've sent an email out to everyone about my views on raising the millage rate this year. We're going to have, according to your numbers, fifteen million of additional money using the current revenues? Is that what your, your calculation was, one twenty one versus one oh six? Is that still equal one fifteen million? It does.
Well, he had eight million, I'm sorry.
Let me finish, thank, thank you. We give everyone a chance without interruption. And what we're really asking you, we haven't dug into this budget deep enough, deeply enough to find all the cuts that I think are available. And I'm just going to go through a few of them here because I don't think we should be setting anything until we've, uh, to, to address our own house because we're asking other people to pay it without getting our own house in order first. And that's the way I view this. You know, I'm looking at a variety of expenditures that we should be considering, and there's a variety of income sources we should be considering. We need to maximize and monetize our assets, for example, with parking. We're going to be talking about that later. And you know, I've had conversations with almost every city around me with, with, with respect to parking and the concept of, uh, well, you know, the argument, well, we need to provide place, sort of restaurant employees and other city employees have a place to park. Well, one of the reasons we don't have a parking requirement when the people are doing downtown, we take, you need this many spaces or that many spaces and they're all within that, uh, in that area is because we expect them to, to provide their own parking, they'll find their parking elsewhere. It's not the job of the city to subsidize their parking. And once we get into the situation where we're going to be having these parking lots generate revenue, they are going to generate revenue. And we can argue whether the employees should or should not, you know, park there because even though there's parking garages that are going to be available that are owned by the city and are already subsidizing the, by the taxpayer. But if the restaurants want to, like they do in every other city, the whole, every other city to provide some kind, they buy a parking permit, so to speak, from the, whatever city they're in, Boca or wherever city they're in, and they drop it, Palm Beach Gardens, wherever, and they put it in their thing so that they know that, that, that it's paid for, the restaurant is providing parking for its employees. That's the way it's supposed to go. We pretend that it's not supposed to go that way, but it is. We're the only place around that has all this free parking. We can say what we like, but nobody's doing it. And I've said this before, that my one little parking space that I used to use at Boca that I thought was safe, they finally metered it six months ago and I was very disappointed. I thought, nobody knew about the spot, I had it, they found it, I'm, you know, I'm now paying to park. But I will tell you that the restaurant owners didn't find any depletion of the business that they're getting because their employees then needed to pay for parking. And the employers provided parking allowances for their employees. It may be what our restaurants have to do, but it should not be subsidized by the people around town to subsidize the restaurants and those people for their parking. So we need to, that, that's a revenue source we need to start considering before we talk about millages. Secondly, and, and this is going to be an uncomfortable one because everyone's going to look around saying, what, you know, all this. I note that the insurance costs have gone up again for the city. But the contribution level from the employees has not gone up in eight years, has not gone up in eight years. I canvassed all the other cities around and they're still saying the, the same amount. So even though the parking, even the insurance is going up, the employee contribution to that, to that fund has not gone up. So that's an offset that's readily available and should be employed because every other city does it. It's even more compelling when we talk about that the city of Delray Beach is already funding at the taxpayer's expense, whether or not the, that taxpayer is living, wherever they're living, funds for its employees, a wellness center where they can go in and get medical treatment, dental treatment, get all their medicines for free. So when you talk to Boca and they have like three or four different plans, that's Boynton, three or four different plans, um, some of them where the city pays for, for everything is because they don't have a wellness center. And they, they're first to say, well, we don't have what you have. So everybody trying to say they want to be this, they like what Boca does here, but they don't like what Boca does, I don't want to be Boca, I don't want to be Boynton, I want to be Delray. So we have especially tailored stuff where there's revenue sources that are available there to offset the cost of our insurance payments every year that every other city in our situation is doing. So that the fact that no one, the fact that our employees have not had any increase at all in their, in their, in their contribution for eight years, I, I think that, that we've been, we, we have been generous enough for, for long enough. Let me put it that way, and kind of enough is enough. We talk about, um, I mean, we, I, I haven't really analyzed whether or not the, the freebie transportation is worth the, the subsidy of five hundred and ten thousand dollars a year from the city. I don't know, the, the people say, well, the restaurants need it, they, they need it, they need, they need it. Well, at some point, the restaurants also should be paying for the transportation to their restaurants, not the little old lady living in Lake Idaho who doesn't leave her apartment. And all she does is pay increased property taxes for what she doesn't know, didn't use it. We, we have the subsidy for Old School Square, it's eight hundred, talking about going to seven hundred with their millage that they're coming in, and we're going to have that Old School Square, that, that, that TDA subsidy is going to be discussed at some, some later date. But that, that, they really should be at a five hundred level. They don't need, I mean, because I'm looking at the salaries for everything and I'm wondering, how can you get paid a full salary here if half your time is spent on this? I mean, that's going to be a question that some budget person's going to have to answer, and I'm not going to answer it today, but I will have the information for everybody at some point. So all I'm saying is, and, and, and we talk about, and I, and I read, you know, there was an email, one of my colleagues wrote, very, very well-written email, uh, we, we differ on some points because I wrote an email talking about, you know, well, costs have gone up, they haven't gone up seventy nine percent. And, you know, and everyone always just say, well, the cost of living is going, that's fine, but as far as I know, the city of Delray isn't out buying eggs, isn't out buying meat, isn't, they've got some genuine cost municipal inflation, but not to the level that we have raised money in the past. And the concept that we haven't reduced our rates, but you're paying, I mean, this, this didn't work in the last campaign and I used it effectively and will use it effectively again. The, the, the fact is, when you, when your rates, when your, your appreciation goes ten percent and you give me a one percent break, I'm still paying nine percent more. So the argument that, well, we, we haven't reduced our millage or, you know, that we've had this history of millage, is just saying we haven't reduced our tax rate. They're not saying we haven't reduced our taxes and the people, and I use the term forty five percent because taxpayers were out of pocket forty five percent. And that's what, I'm, you know, I, I, everyone says, I'm, I'm working for the taxpayers, the citizens. Yeah, I am. I'm working for the people that actually pay everybody's salaries, including the vast salaries you get paid to sit up here. I mean, just talking retirement money up here. And we absolutely, it's for the money, it's for the money, and, and for the adoration. There's no doubt, no, no doubt about it. And, uh, so, and, and, and I, I want to adjust because I know you, you hit on the, the, the reserves. A lot is being made about what the reserves, we should or should not have, and people throw number, all kinds of numbers about, all kinds of numbers about. Now, I've talked to the League of Cities, I've talked to two of the three major rating agencies, and yes, what you have in your fund is an element in determining whether or not you get your triple A rating, but it's not even the most important element. What I didn't understand, it is not even the most important, it's important, but it's not the most important. I'll give you with the three most because I talk about if you have a material decrease in, in your, in your, your standing, it can affect your rating. But they talk about, um, your ability to raise capital. Well, at a five nine, six one, eight percent millage rate, it, it would be high. You still have two X, two millage points you can go to raise money. So there's, at, at the rates we're talking about for millage here, the city has an incredible ability to raise money when and if, and that's the underscore, if it needs it. So just to say, well, we should have thirty percent or we should have twenty five percent or we should have fifteen percent, those numbers are important, but they're not the most important. They also talked about, um, your, uh, whether you have a declining tax base. Well, we don't really have a declining tax base here, on the contrary. So these are all factors that they look like. And when I talk about the ability to raise money, when you go down to some, some of the cities in Dade County, which are already at nine percent, they're, they're at the top rate, but they still don't have one to go. We could go four, we could, we could add four mills, people would hate us for it, but all our bills would get paid. No one would be out of pocket. The city would be, would be fine, we have the ability to raise money, we also have the ability to borrow money that, that some people like, some people don't like, but cities borrow monies all the time. In fact, you and I have had this conversation in the past about how most cities up north actually for their capital improvements borrow money and spread it out over years. Reason being, why should I pay a big hit this year for, for a piece of property when that's going to be a thirty year development and I'm eighty two years old and I'll be dead in five years and the next person who buys it won't have to pay for the benefit that I provided? So this is a common practice in a lot of other places, not in Delray, but in a lot of other places. These are all things we need to consider when we talk about doing capital improvement funds, when we talk about doing all of it. This, I mean, there are so many different things that I can, I can, I can, I can talk about, but I, I'm going to allow, um, ability to, I don't know, ability to, I, I don't know what I was writing here because the pencil broke, but there, 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 there are four to five major components. And I said, as I said, I sat with the League of Cities, I talked to two of the three rating agencies, and I learned a lot of things. And, and one of them is, yes, your, your percentage is, by the way, your historical use of your reserves is also important, but not historical use of reserves for other kinds of things, the historical use of reserves against, um, emergencies. And we had to use the hurricane as an example. And the example that they gave to me was, well, the most municipalities, you know, they have a budget where their, their city workers, they get a hurricane. Well, the tax revenues don't stop coming in, tax revenues still come in, and the workers that are working in the city are redeployed, they're doing different things. Your make, your people, the maintenance people are now working on streets or they're doing this, they're still being, and capital projects are put off and everything's put off. It's not like you're in a dire circumstance. So having two months of operating reserves generally was what they said, unless you have no ability to raise money, unless you have a declining tax base, then two months of operating reserves is plenty. Now, we can argue, people could say, well, they want to have twenty five, they want to have thirty. I ask them, why? Because someone says that you should have it, then why have a hundred percent? I mean, that, you could do that too. So anyway, I am, I do not believe we need to raise in the millage rate, I believe we have enough in our own budget. We haven't even looked at whether or not we're going to cut any of the special events. But we have a special event supervisor, gets a person that gets paid over seventy thousand dollars a year. We have a development, we have a, your economic development activities in line five, division oh six oh, line five five nine with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And all I can see, I don't see any business development coming out of that office. I see a lot of job fairs, which Career, Career Source does, and Palm Beach Community, Palm Beach College does, and other people do. So, and I'm not saying get rid of the office, but I'm saying it should be redeployed to do other things because economic development means bringing in new business. I will tell you that Boca Raton sends people to these trade shows to try to get corporate relocations. Delray's never had a seat at the table. That's what their economic development officer does. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of room in our budget when you have this kind of increase that I gave to everybody, when you have seventy-eight percent increase in your in your revenues from from two thousand and fifteen. You know, we've had a twenty-four percent increase in employees, and it's only a seven percent increase in population. Everybody says, oh, we have all this growth, we have all this growth. Well, we do. I was, I represented developers who did some of that growth. We replaced a twenty-five unit building with a fourteen unit building. A lot of construction, they see new construction, but the net gain on people was not a lot. We've had a net gain, thankfully, but it's not as overly cumbersome in terms of to support the budget increases that are being proposed. So I'm going to, I've given my spiel. I'm happy to, I'm happy to go one point to point on everything that I have researched, not that I've heard, that I have researched, and provide whatever empirical documentation people would like. And I'm going to turn it over. Who wants to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
Just have a little bit to say. And thank you for all of your research. But I just wanted to say that these options that we were given, these three options, and I appreciate Mr. Moore and Mr. Dakowitz for the information, but it does not present or solve the problem of our shortfall. I mean, even, you know, all the way down to the two point six one one, it it does not solve the problem. And, you know, I did not support the rollback for reasons that was simple, that I was concerned about level of service and the quality of service that our residents expect here in Delray Beach, and that we would find ourselves exactly where we are today. That was my major concern. But at the same time, I don't think this is a time to place additional tax burden on our our residents. We have, in October, we have the sewage coming up. We have the sanitation bill, Florida Power and Light, raise their rate. So, you know, we should not put this burden on our residents. So I would not be in favor of raising a millage rate at this time either. I did go buy some eggs, Mayor. I haven't bought any in a year, but I bought some. So now I consider those, but that's a a joy for me to have on my salad these days. So, you know, just like we do in our own households, we just have to, as you said, dig deeper, look for more efficiencies, and try to balance this budget.
Thank you. Who like, Mr. Long, would you like to go, or would you like to go, Julie?
No, let the gentleman go first.
All right, thanks, everyone. I have a bunch of notes here, I'll try and get through them pretty quick, though. So what we addressed in the presentation was, we're we're facing this, a couple of things. We were facing this one point three million dollar shortfall in the fire department budget, right? We know that. And that's based on our ability to sustain this new twenty-four seventy-two shift schedule that we're contractually mandated to to keep and to maintain the three-three staffing model. We all agreed that this is critical for for safety in our, in keeping up with national standards. And then add on top of that, the A-Guide cost, which is apparently nine hundred and seventy, or nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Right, so we've added those two things in the mix, which the highest tax rate that the two, six point two, six one one would address those concerns, it seems like. So what we haven't talked about in this meeting yet is the fact that the city has been an eight-month stalemate with the PBA. And according to the Special Magistrate's Recommendation Report that just came out last week, the city was found to have the financial capacity to support better wages and pensions, but our budget shortfalls have kept us from reaching a resolution. Additionally, some other things we haven't mentioned is, another thing we haven't mentioned is that we've paused most of our road resurfacing projects citywide because of budget shortfalls. That's a very visible example of how chronic underfunding impacts our residents. So I want to talk about, I want to set the record straight, let's say, on this raising taxes narrative. I I personally find it to be a bit misleading, having voted for the last two budgets prior to this. We are not raising taxes. We are adjusting the city's share of the property tax rate after years of responsible reductions, and then last year's aberrant, enormous, and in my opinion reckless, reduction that put us in this very unstable position. So the highest proposed millage rate in the presentation, which was six point two one one, is still lower than the millage rate in two thousand and twenty-four, which was a reduction from the year before. This rate does not and cannot account for other taxing authorities, such as the county, the school board, the state. We don't control those taxing authorities, nor should we try to. If we had simply continued the trend from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four and adopted a modest rate, we would have maintained a lower tax burden still, the part that we can actually control from past years. We would have potentially avoided some of the issues that I just referenced. We would have preserved critical services like police, fire, and infrastructure, which are all, in my opinion, at risk right now. It's not even my opinion, it's just, they're, those are just facts, based on what's going on. So we've seen that the difference to the average homeowner is minimal. There's a lot of talk up here about impacting residents, right? The average taxpayer, if we went to the six point two one one rate, saves thirteen point two four dollars a month. That's what they would save if we went, that's what they save with the current millage rate compared to if we went to the six point two one one rate. So I would ask folks, ask ask ourselves, right? If if you would pay thirteen dollars a month to ensure fully-staffed police and fire departments, properly resurfaced roads, and continued investments in park safety and sanitation. I know for me, I I can't get out of the coffee shop on a given day for less than thirteen bucks, especially with my fiance's like macadamia nut milk lattes with like sixteen add-ons. I'm not going to get out of there for like eighteen bucks. I know, listen, so, listen, I'm willing to to forego one or two of those trips a month for the peace of mind to know that our our first responders, our public safety and our our infrastructure is is fully funded. So, listen, here's the point I want to make, Mayor, because you you referenced looking for all these revenue sources.
Yep.
And I'm with you on that, for for some of them, not all of them, but for some of them. One of the first things I did in two thousand and twenty-three, right after I got elected, was ran, led the charge really on the three-two-T parking structure that we now have throughout the city, which raises substantial revenue for the city. It was, and that aligns better with our curbside management study that we had done years ago. And I still think we should be charging for those other lots in the city. I'm on board with that. But we talked about that last time, before we passed this rate, when I argued against it. We talked about a whole bunch of different ideas to raise revenue. Commissioner Casell brought up raising parking on the beach. We haven't done any of it. So why should we expect that now all of a sudden, next year, we're going to find all these revenue sources? So my, my, hold on, hold on, let me
For the record, I'm surprised that we didn't. I thought we had pretty good understanding that we wanted these things raised, and 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 they were not.
But this was an experiment, in my opinion, right? We're like, okay, put the cart before the horse, we'll find the money. We didn't, we didn't find the money. So why would we make the same mistake again when we have a chance to stabilize, we can still concurrently look for revenue sources? Then guess what? I won't even be here. You guys can lower taxes next year again, right before you go run for office again, right? Everyone wins, but we need a year to stabilize. We need a year to stabilize. And listen, I'm not saying let's spike property taxes like through the roof. I'm just saying, let's go to the rate that we frankly should have adopted last year, and it's still lower than two thousand and twenty-four. That that's my pitch. I just think we need a year to stabilize while we find other ways to offset this, and then we do it in a responsible way. That, to me, should be the order in which we do this. We know that we're reducing revenues, we know we can pay for everything, instead of shooting from the hip and saying, well, let's just lower it and we'll figure it out as we go. That didn't work, we tried it. That's all I got.
Great. Ms. Casell? No, Mr. Yelich, recognizing you.
I, I'm going to agree with Vice Mayor Long. I sat up here last time and wholeheartedly supported the rollback because we had a whole list of things that we were going to do. Cuts, you were going to, we were going to sharpen pencils, go line by line, get revenues. It did not happen. And the concern that I have is what what was, our our finance department, I believe, described one point, and that's cutting to the bone, and that was last year. Now we're taking last year's numbers, and we're cutting them more going forward. Now, look, if you can find your cuts, I mean, you're going to cut special events, you've said this at three meetings. Lay out your numbers.
I'm happy to do that.
Do it, let's talk about it before we get to the ad valorem.
I'm happy to do that. But we haven't had those kind of detailed meetings.
We need to have those details, you know, we we've brought it up three times. Provide your detail.
I'm agreeing with you that we should have raised the rate for this year.
If you want to provide your detail, and if it's supported, I don't really share your idea about eliminating freebie. I think a ton of the residents really appreciate that. Right, but I'm saying, I guarantee you, when you put it out there and you start getting emails, you're not going to do it. So it's not on the table.
Emails to whom?
Anyone, you get, we all get emails. When we say something, you're saying, what if we take some funding away from OSS? When you start getting emails, you're going to say, no, I can't do that. I don't want to make decisions about cutting based on things we might potentially do that we're most likely not going to do. We know that. The the first, if, could you go back a few slides, Mr. Dakowitz or Darcy?
By the way, I don't, I mean, with respect, let me just intercede.
Please don't, it's my time. You said that to me, so if I can finish, then you can speak. I'll let you know if you don't mind. No? Yes, no, wait, back one more, I think. Right, so you start with your initial projected shortfall. It's really, in your scenario, this scenario that you wanted, that Mr. Moore presented to us last time without consulting any of us about what what we were looking to accomplish, which I'm still upset about, but another story for another day. In this scenario, we have a twenty-three point nine million dollar shortfall. We can't afford the three-three that we already agreed is happening, right? Three men on an ambulance for our residents, and we have no accommodations for A-Guide. Put it all together, we're twenty-six point four million in the hole approximately. Now you sent out an email saying we need to find one point six million. I don't know where you're getting that number from, but that is not what we need to find. Have our department heads reviewed that list of vacancies? I reviewed that list, the two point three seven. Have our department heads looked at that vacancy, and do they know what that is, Mr. Moore? Because I don't think so.
With respect, the one point six came from when we applied to things with all the cuts that they had. There was one point six left, and that was to to fund what we want to do with fire. That's, that, the record's kind of
So you're not, you don't want to fund the A-Guide then? You're saying after all of these cuts and not including the A-Guide, it's actually one point four. But thank you for clarifying. So did you check with your department heads on the vacancies and attrition? Because I just talked to a department head and went through the list. There were about seven in one department. I said, this is a little concerning, is this concerning? And the individual said, I didn't even know about this.
Well, the Department of Finance, working closely with all involved, went through this analysis to determine what needed to be calculated and so forth.
The presentation we got was for maintaining the current level of service from all of our staff, correct?
Our interest is to offer consideration
The presentations we got, week to week, in those various budget meetings.
I'm attempting to answer the question.
Thank you.
Our interest is to do what we can to strike a balance to maintain level of service while identifying any and all efficiencies we possibly can, taking a look at every calculation possible to come back with reasonable considerations. And that involved everybody, that does involve everybody.
My question is, when we got presentations from the various departments, so let me use yours as an example. You didn't fill one position, you cut out some grant funding. I looked at your department presentation as a good presentation that represented what you really needed, not excessive, because you weren't filling a vacant position, and you were eliminating some grant money. And why I'm asking you this is because when we got together last time on the tenth, this slide was up, and I asked you very specifically, is that column, which totals two hundred and one million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, the requests of our departments to keep us at level of service? And you said three times, yes, yes, yes. But this weekend, I went back and compared the presentations done to us and the amounts given to us in those presentations to what is actually in this list, and they're not the same. So you cut the department's requests and then gave them to us as the two hundred and one million figure. So you cut it before you even gave it to us. And then you're cutting it twenty-four million, I'm rounding up, Henry, because you know, you like rounding, no joke. And then we're still another four million short. How are you, as our city manager, our leader, who has to run this city, presenting this to us as a viable option? We are twenty-six million dollars short to operate and function at the level of service our residents need.
Which is why, if I may, which is why we presented the various scenarios. It's a moving target, it's a rolling process, ladies and gentlemen. And you mentioned, Commissioner Casell, about the office of the city manager only. The office of the city manager, the city manager's role and function is to be responsible and accounting for all departments. So I'm not just focused on one particular office and one particular section or division thereof. My obligation, working closely with finance and all the department directors, is to do what we can to identify any and all efficiency that we possibly can, so as to come back with reasonable considerations. So have adjustments been made? They always do in every budget process for which I've been a process, for which I've been involved throughout my career.
You put this out as your recommendation, and that's where you, I found that inappropriate? Because if that is your, is that your recommendation? Is your recommendation what was presented last week? That we hold on the taxes as they are, and we look to find twenty-six million dollars somewhere?
No, the initial consideration was
And you shouldn't have your name on it as city manager recommendation. That's my suggestion to you, because
Commissioner?
We should have had a consensus on what to present, and we shouldn't even be starting.
Was to come back with various scenarios, which is what we accomplished today. So we provided you with four different scenarios, four different millage rates. We accomplished what we committed June tenth. I made some considerations based on the current millage rate position of five point nine zero six three, and I've had individual discussions with all of you all as to why we are where we are, why we might be needing to consider different options and scenarios. And thus, we came back July eighth, today. That's the basis of this dialogue, so that we can achieve some consensus and direction to proceed in this regard. It is a rolling process, it moves every single year, every single quarter. That does not change.
I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Moore, if I may, it surprised me that you would put up, even put up a scenario that falls so short financially, that is not even probably doable without us going into our reserves much deeper than we anticipate in that slide. But I'll leave it at that. We have been leasing our vehicles where years ago, Mr. Dakowitz, we used to purchase them. We have been using our reserves annually to balance our budget, where years ago, we did not have to do that. We had robust reserves at thirty percent, thirty-five, actually. At one point, we decided to to cap, we shouldn't go over twenty-five, and anything in excess should be utilized to fund our funds because we were doing so well. That has not been the case of late. And, you know, remind my colleagues, we did get over fourteen million in ARPA funds, which we supplemented our budget with in addition to what we pulled down from our reserves. The financial situation is not good. And pretending that there's all this stuff we can cut, when there truly isn't, is concerning. If we have an emergency, FEMA has said they're not going to be the go-to agency. We we are going to have to deal with that ourselves. Now, if I may finish what I'm saying, we have, I I'm not done.
FEMA comment just threw me because they're being interviewed all day today, they're being interviewed, so
They are being interviewed about that situation, but there was an article in the paper a while ago about Miami and about Florida.
It was in the paper, it must be true.
It wasn't in the paper, Mayor, please, unnecessary. If I may, I just want to say something. You put out an email saying the cost increase that we, the revenue increase of eight point five million that we will receive will cover the increases in cost of living and insurance, and that is one hundred percent inaccurate. I wrote to the city to ask, what is the actual, for the budget, cost increase we need for our salary? our salaries and benefits is 9.5 million, and for our health insurance is 2 million. That's 11.5 million dollars that we need in addition to what we had last year, just to stay where we are. It doesn't, the numbers don't work. I would love it to work. It, the idea that we don't wanna cut taxes for our residents, we wanna do everything for our residents, but at what cost? What are we taking from them? And that's the concern.
Thank you for making my point, cause I used that, not my number, based on what the initial presentation, but I was corrected by, by Mr. Dakowitz today that the number's actually gonna be 15 million. So, we will have the money for the cost of living increases and things such as that. Am I correct?
What would be 15 million? I don't-
You said that the revenues are going from 100, from 100, from 120, uh, going from 106 to 121. That's 15 million dollars. I was going off your 8.5. I'm happy to hear that it's gonna be some millions of dollars higher than that, because it, then, it actually makes my point even better as to why we should be raising military rate if we have a sufficient amount of money coming in now to cover those items that we just discussed. And-
With, with that money coming in, we still have all these deductions.
We have a lot of wish list items that we're having to cut. There's no question about it.
One second. The point is, we have 11.6 million dollars or 11.7 million dollars, but we're still not funding all the vacancies, and we're not funding attrition. So, how do you say that all the revenues are covering expenses?
Because vacancies aren't on day, vacancies aren't on day one. You yourself said vacancies aren't on day-
No, the funding, we're not budgeting them. They have X number of vacancies in a department. Let's say that number is a million dollars. We're gonna give them half a million, say, lots of luck, try to hire the people that you need.
Well, the, one could argue that, um, that, you know, the, the swelling of, of government isn't just in Washington DC.
One can argue that. One can argue that when you reduce, reduce your military every year, and then last year do a rollback, you're getting to the point where there aren't any revenues. So, you have to pull down from your reserves every year to cover the expenses.
You just said we're gonna get 100, 121 million dollars in, in ad valorem revenues, which is 15 million dollars more than we got last year.
But look at the reserves that you have to take down. It's at least 7.3 and it might be 8.9.
I can read.
Well, the rating agencies say, why are you reserves, using reserves for operating expenses?
Right.
Okay? You keep saying, you spoke to two of the rating agencies.
Yes.
And they said, the reserves are not that important.
They know, they didn't say they weren't important. They said it's one factor.
Of course, it's one factor.
Your ability to raise money is a factor.
But the ability to raise money without the willingness to do it-
Your increasing tax base is a factor. Your ability to finance is a factor.
Isn't worth it. If you can, you're in a wealthy community, but you refuse to raise the military.
Right.
They see that, and they see that we keep having to take money from reserves to cover operating expenses. We're not even talking about capital yet.
We're not talking, we're talking about, we're talking about an arbitrary number of what your reserves should be. We wanna say 21, we wanna say 15, we wanna say 20.
Do you know that in the Western United States, the reserves are between 50 and 75%?
Right.
And that's considered conservative. And the rating agencies say, well, the Northeast is very low and the South. Listen, pay me now, pay me later. But God forbid, we have a calamity and we don't have reserves and FEMA isn't there, what are you gonna do? Layoffs? I'm trying to understand, this is called financial resilience.
Right.
We have it, but we hope we never have to use it.
We can argue, but we have two months with the full operating reserves, and that assumes-
Too much based on what? Your metric?
He said two months.
Based on, based on your budget. I got two months of operating reserves.
Ladies and gentlemen.
If I take, if I take, take your-
We have a policy that says it should be 21 to 25%.
Correct.
Are you saying you disagree with that policy?
I'm saying that reserves need to be analyzed, not by somebody saying, I think we should have this.
Mr.-
I think reserves should be analyzed based on true empirical evidence as it applies to each individual city, not on what some other city does.
Gentlemen. Gentlemen.
And we have a low tax rate, we have an increasing population, we have the ability to finance, and to suggest that we should just have extra money under the mattress because it's nice to have, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't, I don't, I cannot and will not buy that.
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Your opinion?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Dakowitz, if I may, please.
Sure.
Mr. Dakowitz, we've done the work, we've presented various-
Mr. Mark has to go first. I was just interrupting Mr. Mark. Actually, I was, I don't know who I was.
I've been very patient. I wanted, um, first of all, I'll try to be the voice of reason here, having done budgets for 45 years in the corporate world. The documents that are prepared are very good, and it spurred good, good dialogue up here, which is what it's meant to do at this stage. You and I've talked about that. This is, this is where it's supposed to be. But I would, I would argue quite clearly, this is not a balanced budget. No way, no how, no, no can do when you look at the numbers. Police and fire are the majority of our budgets. We all know that, and we know that those two contracts are, one is, has gone up and one will go up. Um, and we have to be conscious of that, uh, which is fine. We need to take care of our first responders, so, um, but, but there is gonna be a swelling in the budget based on that, and, and all the taxpayers in Delray land need to know that. That, that's a decision that we've made, and we're, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to fund that. I, I, Mayor, I disagree with you on the reserves. Um, as you know, I spent a lot of time in Washington. I was there two weeks ago. The federal agencies took big cuts with DOGE. The hardest hit agency, in my opinion, is FEMA. And when I was in Washington, I spoke to some of those, those representatives, and they, clear as a bell, said, if you get a category five storm on the peninsula in Florida, the response ain't gonna be what you're used to with FEMA. You're gonna be on your own.
Yeah.
And you better be prepared for that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I, I have great fear of this budget with the amount of money that we're pulling out of our reserves. And, you know, I don't, I don't view reserves to be a bad thing. I mean, you're investing that money, we're earning interest on it, it's contributing. It's not, it's not wasted money in our city, much like your 401K monies, you know, in your personal account is not wasted money. So, I'm, I'm super fearful of, of pulling those reserves down, because if we get a cat five and, you know, it wipes out our water treatment plant and our sewer plant, the, the city's gonna be in deep doo-doo.
Right.
No, no pun intended.
[laughing]
But we, we have to, we have to be, we have to be on our game for our residents, that we, we can't have the city shut down because of a category five and, and, and we can't count on FEMA. So, I think we gotta really think that through. I mean, I know you've talked to some people. I think the world has just changed with what's happened in DC in, in the past six months with all the cuts. So, that's, that scares me to death. We, we do have no clear plan for raising revenues. That, that's something I think we really gotta work on. If, if it's there, I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
It's a continuous process, if I may.
I understood, and I'm not mad about it. I'm just saying-
No, no, I'd like to respond, please, because it came up a couple times. That's a continuous process. It's not only we engage the proposed budget process, but through the course of the fiscal year, with respect to parking, you'll hear a little bit about that tonight and beyond. That's a continuous process, ladies and gentlemen. You all pointed out specifically the beach, and quite frankly, this is a continuous process. We came up with a number of scenarios, just to go back to the basis of why we are here today, beginning at 3:30, to talk about scenarios. We made a commitment to accomplish that during the June 10th meeting, ladies and gentlemen. And of course, empirically, financially, econometrically, we have to begin with what the current military rate is, being 5.9063. That was the net metric in which we worked. That is how budgeting of evaluation works with respect to military rate policy direction. From there, we take a look at scenarios based on the feedback having been offered, and that was what's been accomplished today, to give the commission an opportunity to provide guidance and direction today, so that we can complete the process. It's not yet complete. I'm, I'm somewhat passionate about this now, because there's been a couple editorial remarks here at the dais about not having a complete budget balance, et cetera. No, that's part of the process, ladies and gentlemen. So, what we have to have today, the office of the city manager, the department of finance, as we continue to work with everybody, some expectations from the commission with respect to what the military rate policy should look like. A couple of you all brought up a couple suggestions, and we work within those realities and we go from there. It's a continuous process, and that takes us until September. It is only July 8th today. So, what I'm asking for, however way you all can decide, without being editorial, editorial or hypercritical in any way, the numbers are the numbers. They are what they are, and we spent a lot of time with you, ladies and gentlemen, going back to past four to five months, outlining why we are where we are. That revenues cannot be excessive above and beyond the scenarios we've come up with. We are not at liberty to take into consideration any additional increases from parking or some other tweak or adjustment that may happen here and there. Aggressively, that does not accomplish that. However, as they continue to go along, which begins as part of the upcoming regular meeting, there will be opportunity to get to that place. It's a continuous process, ladies and gentlemen. So, I'm asking you all to please do whatever you possibly can to offer us some direction based on the data and analysis, working with everybody. We've been providing, going past a few, via the past few months, up until today, we take us forward beyond this point, and we work from there.
May I make a comment?
We have to provide a balanced budget recommendation, so that is not questionable. That is, that is, that, that is not impossible. That has to happen, and it always does. We were hit with direction as we did last year. There was a lot of editorial remarks and comments about it. We are making it work. We're doing what we can, and we are meeting the fund balance policy position. You've accomplished that. You had CPIS during the June 3rd, 2025 regular city commission meeting articulate that for you. They did. So, again, the purpose today is to offer us the guidance and direction, so that we can complete the process. That is what this is for. This is deliberate. It has to be in this manner. Delray Beach is the only municipality, literally, in the state of Florida that went to the rollback rate last year. The Needon Florida, which is a tiny operation on the west coast of the state, the only other municipality that I'm aware of that did that. That was separate from the recommendations having been offered, and we made it work. We did what we could to get to that place. Nevertheless, it's a continuous process. So, please, ladies and gentlemen, give us that direction, so that we can demonstrate respective core competencies, and once again, offer a balanced budget recommendation.
Yeah, and, and I agree with what you just said. So, if, if my comments didn't reflect that, I'm sorry, because as Henry and I talked about, this, this is where we're supposed to be right now.
I, I just wanna make a comment to clarify. This page, and I apologize, I'm the new guy, maybe I got it wrong, but if you-
No, you did not.
You did not.
Do not say that. No, you did not.
You're good.
Okay, I can say it if, okay.
We love you anyway, don't worry, continue.
The point, the point is, this was made under the assumption-
Right.
Maybe a false assumption, that we were not going to increase the military.
Right, we know.
Number two.
It was a baseline, Mr. Dakowitz. I talked about that in my overview. That was the initial base to provide an opportunity for additional scenarios.
So, the point was, we had assumptions. The assumption was, continue the same military, and second, that we would go to 3-2. Those are our assumptions. And we made the necessary adjustments to get to a balanced budget. They are severe, some would say harsh, but we made it work as a proposal. We then had the meeting a month ago, and the direction we got was, no, we might increase the military, and two, we do wanna keep 3-3. So, we developed these scenarios, and what we've done is, we've replenished some of the cuts that we initially had. We made sure we covered the A-Guide, and we gave you choices. So, as Mr. Mark just pointed out, you had good information, you analyzed it, you thought about it, you came back with suggestions and guidance. We responded. We wanna give you the information you need to make the best decisions balancing taxes and operating expenses today and reserves for a rainy day cat five. And it's not an easy decision. Economics is all about balancing conflicting needs. We can't satisfy everything.
Right.
So, I don't envy your choices that you have to make, but the dialogue that we proposed is working. We gave you first shot, you came back and said, tweak it here, there, everywhere. We've done it again, we still have time, and we're looking for further guidance to say, do you want one of these four choices? Would you like some other alternatives? Just give us the guidance, we will run the numbers, we will work with the department heads as best we can, and we will end up with the best possible budget we can do. We're humans. So, thank you.
Perfect. I just have a couple more comments, and then I'll, I'll shut up and go away. Um, the, the comment on the restaurants and the, and the parking hits home with me. I've talked to a bunch of the restaurant owners recently, and it's disturbing what you're hearing. They, they are having trouble attracting waitstaff and busboys and all that, um, because it's very challenging for those people who don't get paid a lot of money to find a place to park in our city. And they're, they're saying that they're, they're losing staff to the suburbs where the parking is, is free. So, I think we gotta be conscious of that. A, a lot of our community downtown relies on that, that, you know, that lower socioeconomic group, and I think we gotta take care of them one way or another. I think that's really important. I, I, I don't really wanna talk about special event cuts until we have a dialogue about those, to see what we're gonna cut. It scares me. I mean, I don't wanna lose the beauty that we have in Delray Beach. I don't know what we can afford, but at some point, we need to talk about it.
And that's part of the continuous process that I'm constantly advocating, ladies and gentlemen. You do not bite the elephant all at once. It's a continuous process. We understand that. You'll have that opportunity. And again, we've taken all points under consideration. God knows we did.
Agreed.
As far as the aggregate proposed budget process. So, you will have that opportunity as well, because the process of identifying efficiencies in operations while maintaining the expectations relative to level of services, is a continuous process, and we all have to work together, and we are in position to do so.
I think Mr. Dakowitz would like to comment.
I just wanna make a point with respect. I know there's been a lot of dialogue of special events, so I looked at it. The total cost of all the special events was less than a million dollars. And then I looked at the events, right? We go after, like Willie Sutton said, where is the money? Okay, we have Christmas tree lighting, we have St. Patrick's Day parade. These are the most popular, they're important to the ci, I'm a new guy, but I know they're very important to the pride, they get people involved in the city. And if you take out the big ticket items, which we're not gonna cut, I said I wouldn't even propose it, because the benefits, which are non-financial, far exceed, in my mind, the cost savings. So, I just went on to things that were more practical. But, we're here to serve. If you want us to analyze it, we'll be glad to serve.
Perfect. I would say to you, if at the risk of people saying I'm targeting one group or another, uh, and there are several groups in this, on this, on this list, which I've just shared with Mr. Mark, uh, of all the special events and the total amounts of money, and you are correct in terms of the, the value of them. But you know, the St. Patrick's Day parade used to be, um, private, and when the, the city was flowing with dough, they, they, city took it over, and that's great. But the point is, it's seventy-five thousand dollars. And we can say it adds value, it doesn't add value, I don't know. But the question to me is whether or not it should be sponsorship, not the city ought to pay for it.
Let, let me make a suggestion. There's also been a suggestion that we give discounts to nonprofit groups. So that could be looked at and reexamined. Here's a suggestion.
I agree with you there too.
We're finishing a budget.
Sheet that I didn't bring with me.
We're finishing a budget in four to six weeks. You have raised issues that are very important, that will probably take more analysis.
It will.
We should have a list of these projects and proposals.
I'll have them to you tomorrow at nine o'clock and I'll copy all my, all my telecommuners so they can argue with you.
I'm just saying, we can then marshal the resources to do the analysis and serve it up during the next eight, ten months so that when we come to this. Weeks?
Weeks, yeah.
Seven months.
I mean, I have, I have.
Yeah, I meant months, meaning we have a budget process that takes, I don't know, eight out of twelve months? My point is, we can do the analysis, have these dialogues, tee it up for next year's budget where we could say, we're going to initiate these things and we're going to get more revenue or cost expense savings. Do a good job on the analysis, not under the pressure of this timetable and then have an even better budget next year. But right now, we're running out of time and we want to try to get the best budget right now.
All I'm saying is, we, we're going to be having in the next meeting, we're going to be discussing the parking. We can, at the, at the meeting following this, we can decide to raise those rates today. Today.
And that will be taken into consideration as we found a loss of balance recommendation.
And, and I agree with both Commissioner Casal and Commissioner Long. God, both of them at the same time. That's great. That we should have, this is something, you know, maybe we, you know, the commission, we come up with ideas and, you know, maybe it should have done earlier, maybe we, we were missed, maybe whoever was, it, it doesn't really matter. The point is, we have the ability to raise money in those areas today. Before we get to the next week's budget meeting, today.
You'll never see me turn down more money than you.
Oh, I know. Auditors are all the same. They're, I mean, I love you. I mean, my auditor used to do the same, you know, there was never, he could never have enough reserves. So.
Right.
But I'm saying that every household in this country is going through this. And just to say that, you know, we're not, everyone is, 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 is having to, to rein back a bit. Everyone. And I, I understand, I understand. I've, I spent time going through the, all the sheets of what the municipal, what, what, what they call the municipal appreciation of the municipal inflation rate is, vis a vis the, the year, or year and ice inflation rate, when we try to go out and we want to buy groceries or a car or sheets or something else coming from China, I understand all that. At the same time, there are things that the city could have done to offset some of the increases. For example, in, in, in the city's burden on insurance. I say with seriously, for eight years, we've never had an increase in contributions from the employees into, into insurance. Yet, everything, everything's up and we're still paying for a wellness center? I mean, you know, at some point, I work for the citizens, not the, not the, not.
I work for the citizens too, but wasn't there a survey that said our salaries were lower than almost all the surrounding areas? Maybe they're here because the benefits are attractive. You have to look.
The wellness center is all about.
Yes, the wellness center, the contribution rates. Traditionally, going back fifty, seventy-five years, cities paid less, but they had good pensions and good benefits and more security. So you know what? That's why I say, don't rush, take eight months, do it right, look at all the ramifications and let's make decisions and we'll be glad to implement.
I mean, I would have understood modest increases to keep everyone happy. Eight years, no increase? Every, every other city which attracts people.
Mr. Dakwes, gentlemen, if I may please.
It's five o'clock.
That's part of the process.
I'm not done.
You just said you were done.
No, I'm not done. I got two more things. I apologize, but.
I want to hear them, Mr. Mark.
And I need direction.
So the, the other thing that I don't think is included in this analysis is anything about the Crest Theater. I know we haven't made any decisions on that yet, but I know we want to open that.
That would be a CIP discussion. We'll touch that next week.
And it won't be free.
Right. That's next meeting.
Well, that, that's good. I, I just want to call out, I didn't see anything in the budget for it, so.
Next meeting. Well, see, that's part of our capital improvement.
I'm not complaining, not complaining.
Not about it.
And then the other thing that I brought up in a previous meeting, and I, I really think this commission should consider this, is the in-lu parking money that we're raising, um, it isn't being used the way it was intended to be used. That should be, that money should be separated and earmarked for parking improvement in, in Delray Beach. I don't think it is. I think it's being smushed into the general budget.
We'll have an opportunity to talk about what that looks like as part of the parking picture as well. So again, ladies and gentlemen, all of this, what you're talking about are continuous steps in the process. The principal focus today is the operating budget, what the operating mileage would be. And we go from there. So, so we get that. If I may, ladies and gentlemen.
Being reminded that there, that people are allowed for public comments.
Thank you to our lovely clerk.
I would ask if people could wait to the next meeting for their public comments, that would like really be appreciated because it's immediately following and it's about fifteen minutes from now, you'll have your public comments. But if there's anyone here, I have to say, anyone here for public comment, please feel free to come up now to the lectern and get stared at and go ahead and, go ahead and do it. Seeing none.
Mr., but.
What?
I would like some guidance.
I, I've told you what I think everyone is, I mean, I've got guidance. I think there's more room we can find.
I understand that.
In our certain budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Before we come up with defining military rates and things such as that.
How long do you need to provide that list?
Well, I'm going to provide what I have with my savings tomorrow to everyone. I've got a list, I've got.
Okay, let's, why don't you provide them then?
A ton of stuff, including special events, including, you know, some of these programs that I talked about.
Until we get there and actually physically cross them off the list, we're not there.
But the good news is, we have, we're going to have, the, the, the city finances are not as dire as one might think.
I disagree.
Projects coming on. We've got PEB is getting ready, I mean, the, the Sunday House is ready to get permitted like any day now. Right? We have these other projects, we're getting ready any day now. And the amount of money that they're going to add to the tax base, we're, 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 we're doing fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, Vice Deputy Vice Mayor, you're about to speak.
What do you see as the next step in this process? You, you keep asking for directions.
Yes, ma'am. So again, given the military scenarios we provided and some of you offered your thoughts in terms of what that may look like based on what we brought in again, I'm asking you all to support what the numbers are the analysis has revealed so that we can complete the process to go from there. Mr. Mayor, you talked about sitting tight till we get to a place, but we are on a timeline to get to this place so that we can finalize this.
I'm just saying, I don't want to do it tonight. I want to have a full discussion.
I need to hear from, I need consensus from the body.
I've, I've not said, I speak.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking the commission, I'm asking everybody to please offer your thoughts so that I can prepare accordingly. In response to Deputy Vice Mayor's question and the productive dialogue, I understand where you're coming from there. I need to have aggregate guidance and expectations from the body, all five of you. So please assist in that regard and I'll prepare accordingly. I'll be my responsive and attentive self as always, um, as will everybody else involved. So please, I'd like to hear, what would that be? If you all have an interest, we have a meeting scheduled for three o'clock next Tuesday, of which we'll talk about the capital improvement program focus in this regard. But again, the time is moving, the numbers are the numbers, we are where we are. And all other thoughts and ideas and recommendations you've all offered is a continuous process that will transcend the current fiscal year proposed budget process. So please, offer me your expectations and we will go to work as we always do.
I think we should be looking at the six-two-six rate, frankly, but I don't think that should preclude considerations of uh, what the mayor has brought up in terms of, you know, projected additional revenue. I don't, I think we could do both things, but.
We will have to do both, no matter what.
Skeptical, given that we already tried this and it didn't shake out this year. Um, I think we, our first option or plan here should be an attempt to stabilize our budget while also making these other considerations for a future drop, hopefully next year. So I, I'd like to see the six-two-six, but that's just where I'm at.
Commissioner Casal?
Yeah, I'm in between the six, uh, six oh-six and the six-two-six or six-one-six.
Okay, Commissioner Markert?
I'm in the same spot right now. That's where my head is at.
Okay, Commissioner Burns?
My interest was not to create additional burden on taxpayers. So however we can achieve that, I mean, if we're looking at staying where we are and we think that we can achieve that, then I say we stay where we are.
Um, well, I've made my thing clear. We've had additional revenues coming in, we have places we can cut, we have additional revenue sources. And the, the the argument, I mean, we, we have increasing taxable values. And we're going to be, we, and we have the ability to immediately start these other revenues coming in. Immediately start prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. Prior to October, we will be able to realize things in parking, we'll be able to realize some of these additional fees. And I think they need to be accounted for. And so I, I do not believe, again, after the citizens have paid forty-five percent in additional taxes, and I'm not talking about tax rates, I'm talking about what they had to put in there out of pocket, that there's not room for savings to find what we need to do to do this budget without having to increase the military rate. And that's where I am.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just to summarize, based on the feedback from the majority of you all, I have a suggestion. So a couple of, one or two of you all went back and forth between the six point zero six one one and the six point two six one one, while also taking under consideration the opportunity for revenue adjustments. And again, we can speak econometrically that the specific opportunities on revenue adjustments will not make a immediate impact in terms of what's in store for the fiscal year with respect to operational expenses. So given the scenarios of six point zero six one one and zeros, and, and six point two six one one, striking a balance with all the input having just been offered, my request, the needed request, the average between the two military rates of six point zero six one one and six point two six one one brings it to six point one six one one. And we can offer balanced budget considerations on that basis. Based on the input of the majority of you all right here at the dais, I would like to have an opportunity to not only continue to finalize the balanced budget process based on six point six, excuse me, six point one six one one, as well as the direction which is underway beginning this evening relative to ancillary revenue updates and dynamics along those lines. I would like to take that as consensus, if I may.
Yes.
Well, I, not, not, not for me.
I understand the body, Mr. Mayor. I have to hear it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So we will proceed with a balanced budget consideration of six point one six one one, which I think is quite achievable. So we look forward to continuing the calendar that we've outlined for everyone. The next step is separate and apart, but definitely related. The capital improvement program discussion one week from today, three o'clock. I really appreciate this, ladies and gentlemen, and it's all because of care and attention, our interest to be responsive and attentive based on full econometrics analysis across the board. So again, six point one six one one, which is still significantly less than the previous years and less than two different scenarios we've offered last year as part of initial recommendations coming from the office of the city manager. With that, ladies and gentlemen, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Finished?